To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thanks for coming. Call the roll.
Trustee Spurling, here. Trustee Lee?
Here.
Trustee Heinz. Trustee Youngerman?
Here.
Trustee Marisak?
Here.
And Trustee Bund.
All right, we do have a quorum this evening. Ward me. I'll move on to public participation. This is the two-minute opportunity for any member of the public to address the board. If there's anybody at this time, you can come down to the podium and introduce yourself. All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent. I have two items, and then I entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the village board meeting of January 14th, and then accounts payable through January 24th of 2019.
So move.
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
That carries 4-0, thank you. Under items for separate action, the first one is authorization by the village board to draft a text amendment to Section 11 of the zoning ordinance regarding gas and petroleum manufacturing. As everybody is aware, we discussed this at our last meeting, but I'll ask Jeff for a brief summary, and then we'll continue.
Certainly. At the end of the last meeting, we had board members that wanted to do additional research, and so we pushed the item from last meeting. Since that time, we facilitated a call between Huff &amp; Huff, the engineers, and BioCarbon Solutions. Engineer Wallers was on that call also. Also, Mike Klupe spoke with his counterpart down in Texas, where that other plant is. We provided you guys with the summary of the conference call and of Mike's conversation. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions. Got Engineer Wallers is here. A gentleman from Huff &amp; Huff is here also, if you have questions.
I believe the petitioner wanted this item tabled because they couldn't get here because of the snowstorm in Chicago?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay. Are we going to table this item?
It's certainly our option. We could certainly do that.
I'll make a motion to table the item. To the next meeting.
Right.
Which is, I don't know what the data is.
I'm not hearing a second on the motion. I think the majority of the board had a lot of research of our own to do between the last meeting and this meeting. So while there is a motion on the table to table this, if there is a lack of a second, that will die, and we'll have a discussion.
Have we ever not tabled something that a petitioner has asked to be tabled? For whatever reason, why would we not table it this time if they're asking for it to be tabled?
Well, I have to...
They want to be here to be able to answer questions. Give them the proper respect and opportunity that we give everybody else.
I must have had at least 12 emails, at least. Plus, they gave us a lot of information to look for. I looked up all of that. They said everything they wanted to say. At least they said they did. And to me, they answered my questions, and I sure, after 12 emails and a lot of going, chasing these ghosts down that they gave me, then I'm ready right now. I mean, I don't care if they're here or not. It ain't, it's not going to make a difference to me. And I think they, they claim they, they said everything that they had to say. I mean, they brought everybody in for it, which I agree. It helps larkin, who's here, a local business. But other than that, the rest of the stuff, none of it, none of it came to attrition with me. I mean, it was, it was, I don't know. It just didn't, I, you know, I'm, I can say everything I want right now if you want, but I'd rather wait and see what you have to say after I done with this. But that's what I'm telling you is, I did my homework so much on this, more than almost anything, and I got nowhere. I mean, nowhere.
I, I don't have anything else to say. If the petitioner would like the item tabled, out of respect for the petitioner and the process that they go through, and that the, everything else that we've done for every other petitioner, whenever they wanted something tabled, we accommodate that. If the petitioner wants it tabled, table the item.
I, I get what you're saying, and I totally understand where you're coming from. I get the feeling, and from where I sit, I don't need additional information from the petitioner to make my decision. We had a lengthy discussion. We tabled our vote last time, so we could spend two weeks, and we got a substantial amount of information. So I don't need additional information to make my decision. What we could do is have a discussion tonight. If questions come up that the petitioner would need to answer, or if there's questions that the four of you need answered, then we, then we don't have to take a vote on it. But from where I sit, I don't need additional information to have everything I need.
Another reason to table this item is because you've got one village board member, two village board members weren't here.
We may not have two board members here for quite a, quite a lot of time. And they went through the planning commission, and two different board meetings, we've had discussions on this. And I don't think these two would make a difference if they looked at all the information that I looked up. I, I can't see, you know, I, you can get, throw a book at me, and I ain't going to change my mind. It just does not, none of what they said made sense. Period, the end. And...
Just because we don't have the college degrees to understand what they're doing, doesn't mean that it doesn't make sense.
No, 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 nothing to do with that. These guys gave us places to look for. I looked these people up, none of them are in business. And they're, they're making it sound like they're in business. None of them were in business. The ones that were, went out of business. They gave me three things: Nigeria, Namibia, and Mexico. Three third war, three third countries that don't mean anything to me. But did you give me anything in, in, in the United States? Yeah, they gave me that Reflex out of Bend, Oregon. That was the first one he told me at the planning committee, and I thought, oh, boy, this is, this company went under. This Delta Engineering, none of these places are in business. None of them. One tried, and this Reflex, and let me see here, 208, they opened up. It did 2 million tires supposedly, 211, they upgraded, 214, they upgraded, and 216, they said it was not feasible, and they went out of business. I mean, everyone, China's the only one coming into it right now. That looks like they may have a shot of money and, and how they do things with no EPA, no nothing. But to me, and they've changed their, their thinking too many times with, okay, we're going to put them in storage tanks. Oh, no, we're going to put them in flat cars. Now, we're going to put them back in tank cars. This, they admit, and I, I have to hand it to the guy that invented this. It's a very good idea, but I don't want it next to Aurora University and our town. And all it takes is a hole in their little section to go around there, and you don't have to have a college degree in that to realize it's going to blow.
Same thing can be said about sugar dome. Same thing can be said about VV, uh...
There was other sugar, there was other sugar domes, there was other VVF's when, in, in soap at the time. There's, there is none of these guys. Do you understand?
It's because it's a new technology.
That's what I'm saying. I don't want to be the first one to say, let's put this new technology right in the middle of our people and hope it don't blow up. Yeah, I, I'm not ready for that.
To answer the...
Take it somewhere else.
But wait, we're having a discuss, we're just going to move forward with the discussion.
Well, that's what I was just going to say, is if there's a motion on the table...
Yeah, there's a motion. There was no second, so that dies. So, I also... I'll open it up if you have discussion.
I also don't feel like I need any additional information from the petitioner at this point, because I've done, like Denny said, I've done more research on this than I think I have in anything in the six years I've been on the board. I've looked heart and soul into all of this stuff, and I don't think I, the petitioner doesn't, isn't going to offer me anything new tonight for me to go chase around and look for that I don't already know. But again, he had a motion on the table, so I wanted to get back to, to that. I just don't feel like I need the petitioner here tonight, because they would only speak if we needed answers to questions. I don't have any more questions from where I'm sitting. I don't need any additional information, so...
And I would say, I don't want to have them travel back here if we are leaning toward no. Why should we have them travel back to hold off on tabling them if it's a no?
And the petitioner pushed really hard after the last meeting that they need a decision. They have to get back to their financiers. They need answers. So now we're talking about pushing it off to another meeting, and then we may need to push it off to another meeting, and we're just dragging it out further again. If we have the discussion and did a straw poll, and it was leaning that way...
Do what you want. I mean, I think it's ridiculous that we're, as a community, we're losing manufacturing jobs. And I don't need to remind the village board how many manufacturing jobs we've lost in the last two to three years. We have a company that wants to come in, be it new technology, that wants to do a $40 million investment in our community and create construction jobs, create approximately 60 full-time positions, and we're not looking and, and we're not trying to work something out with them. Originally, it's been an absolute mess, the way that this was handled by community development. It should have never been an ordinance regarding gas and petroleum manufacturing. You guys do, do what you want, whatever.
Thank you. And we can all do, we can all work on this together to figure this out. I think to take a step back from the actual petitioner here, you know, just because it's an application for development doesn't mean it's a good application for development in our community. Our ordinances don't allow this type of use, tire-derived fuel kind of thing. And I think the consensus that I'm feeling from the board is that we need a grander vision for that area. We're not willing to downgrade the zoning in the area to allow gas and petroleum manufacturing. I agree that there's, that we need more manufacturing jobs, but to me, the, the way the petitioner laid this out, it doesn't, the rewards don't quite equal the risks on this. And there appear to be more risks to our area that I'm willing to take on this.
We wouldn't be allowing gas and petroleum manufacturing. At the last meeting, we discussed limiting to this pyrolysis, or however you pronounce it, which is a very restrictive use. So it's not like we'd be voting to allow for gas and petroleum manufacturing. We're, we're all worried based upon some misinformation and some vague comments saying that there are concerns by the Montgomery Country Fireside Protection District, which there aren't. They've been, I've talked to the chief. All those concerns have been addressed up to the state. There are no concerns there. So I don't think it's ever really got its fair shot to start with.
I would step back and say, when you said we're all worried, I, I wouldn't agree with that, that that's where the concern is coming from.
Where's the concern coming from?
My concern is coming from the actual entity that's going to be the people that are doing it, be the company that's doing it. When I did my research, it's not new technology. It's well-established in Germany. The companies that they gave us, that I wrote down, and I looked them up, the one in Terre Haute is from that German company. It's their first manufacturing facility in the United States. They're looking to move or put a headquarters in Indiana. But this will be their fourth manufacturing facility doing this. The one that was in Mississippi, they're not using the pyrolysis or paralysis, however, however the correct way to say it is. They are using a low-temperature polymerization, so that was not a good example for them to give to us. The other one they gave in Alberta, Canada, I could not track down. Now, going back to the one in Terre Haute, it's not even fully functional. They are not up to speed. So my concern is that while it is proven technology, and I completely understand it, I have a very strong science background, I completely understand it, I like it. I like the idea of having a complementary business come in to work with our folks that do the tire shredding. My concern is that these folks have been around for four years, and they don't really have any, anything concrete to show us to say, yes, this will work, or where they can answer the questions in terms of some of the what-ifs that came up even on that call, because they don't have, they still have to design it, they still have to build it. To me, there, there are just too many unknowns, and I personally don't want to be the guinea pig. So I'm not going to support it, and that's why I wouldn't want to, you know, wouldn't second your motion to table it, because if the majority of us are no, I don't want them to waste their time and money coming in here. I think if we can have the discussion and do either a vote or a straw poll, and if, if it is a yes, then fine, let them come back in. We can have more discussion in front of them. But I'm not going to support it for that reason. I don't feel that they are a proven company, and I, I don't know if that's the correct wording I want to use, but I just don't feel comfortable. If they were coming in, let's say with the company from Germany and saying, hey, we've partnered with this company that has three other facilities, and they're all running, and they're using this technology, and there's a track record there, I would feel much more comfortable doing this. But they're new, and I get it. When you're newer, sometimes that's the problem, is you don't have the experience. And I just don't feel comfortable having us be the experiment. So I'm not going to support it.
I had the similar, once something that, I think it was Tim said during the presentation, we need somebody to take a chance on us. And I really did a lot of weighing of the risk-reward. It's 50 manufacturing jobs. I don't know where, he said 50 at the meeting. They led with 300 at Planning Commission, and it came down to 50 full-time positions. And again, I just can't, at the end of the day, I did all the fact-checking, all of the stuff. They said, this is what we do. This is what we do. He said that several times during the presentation. They don't do it. This is what we plan to do. This is how we envision it working, but they don't actually do it currently, nor do they have somebody that does do it currently, outside of this company from Germany that does it. And again...
But they have no connection to the company in Germany. Let's just make that clear.
Correct. So, did a lot of homework, did a lot of research, and at the end of the day, I have to trust my gut. And my gut says, I'm not sure that this is the proper thing to use. It has nothing to do with regarding gas and petroleum, whether that's the right thing or the wrong terminology to use or whatever. If this was a special use, I wouldn't be in support of it. I just don't think that it's something that I can envision us rolling the dice on this technology, although it sounds like a great idea. And it's definitely, it's not green because of what their, the outcomes are, carbon black and a petroleum-based product. But it's definitely recycling, which is a positive. But again, just not, can't wrap my head around doing that here in Village for that parcel. Again, we have a great neighbor in AU that made a $20 million investment, and to stick this right next to that, I'm just not feeling it. I just don't, my gut says no. And at some point in time, that's why I'm here. Do the research, do the homework. At the end of the day, you have to trust your instinct. And my instinct says it, no.
And I would, if, I can just tag on to that. When the gentleman made that comment of, you know, take a chance or take a risk, I think it's very easy for someone to stand over there and say that to people who are sitting here who are accountable to almost 19,000 people, to say, take a risk. And I, I wasn't comfortable with, with that comment that was made at that time either. But I, I'm with you on that. Trustee Marisak?
And then one other thing I wanted to touch on is this idea of misinformation. I know that there was, there was discussion about the fire district's comments, which I think we've, we've fully vetted at this point. We had the fire chief, and I do appreciate that, come up and talk about this project. But the, I have not seen or heard of any misinformation, you know, if they're, if you're talking about press, that's one thing. My, one of my biggest things, and I went to college to study science, so I am well-versed in the atmosphere in this realm. One of my biggest thing is our Illinois EPA and our US EPA both have documents out there that talk about this use specifically, tire-derived fuels from this exact process, saying that they have, that there should be concern over the process, how controlled it can be, what can happen if air seeps into the, to the system. And at the end of the day, they question the economics, which is not really exactly part of my decision-making, but definitely good information to have. So that's, I mean, I think it was, everybody was well-aware where I sat at the beginning of last meeting, and it sounds like the majority of the board has made a decision on where they sit on this today.
Well, at the same time, every time we asked a question, he came up with an answer. But it, it seemed like he wasn't for, well, he wasn't for sure, because he hasn't, nothing's been like this. This Broadman, Oregon, they just came after four years and said, and they dumped money into it, but they didn't dump 40, 40 million into it either. They went as high as 25. And that's why these guys say, oh, we'll go 40 million. Well, 50 workers. Well, then you come down to it, it's not going to be that many workers. We're going to be 350-some days a year we're going to be working. When you gonna, when you gonna do your maintenance? You gotta do maintenance on these things, and shut the whole business down for a day or so, more than a day. And if there's no chance of fire, and he says never a chance for fire, then why did he buy Tom all that foam? I mean, possibly it might be a fire. I mean...
I just want to clarify about, because I feel like what you stated might be a little misinformation. The process of having to shut the whole thing down, that's why they're building seven, though. They're only using five, they're building seven, so that they can cycle them for their maintenance. So I don't, I just don't want that misinformation out there.
There's redundancy in the system.
There was redundancy there so that they could cycle them, so I don't want that to be misleading, that they actually planned for that redundancy, but doesn't change my opinion.
On the maintenance, they did.
Correct.
The reason that they offered to purchase the foam for the fire department is the same reason that VVF has purchased the foam for the fire department.
Well, VVF's had fires out there. And, and I'm just saying, at the same time, though, that one time it's going to be in storage tanks, is storage, and then the next time it's going to be in storage bags by flat cars. First time I ever heard of flat cars was last time. It, it just, he's changed, he gave us answers we wanted to hear, but to me, when Aurora University says, we're going to put 20 million in this spot, and they've done it, I don't really want something next to it that may not work. And if you went to this Broadman...
Did Aurora University know that they were backing up to manufacturing district when they purchased the property?
Yeah, but they didn't think it was going to be anything with oil refinery, I guarantee you.
It's not. It's not a gas or petroleum manufacturing.
It still can blow up.
But the thing is, did Aurora University think that it was going to stay pristine native land?
No, I'm sure they didn't, but they aren't, they aren't figuring they're going to put something next to it that you can blow up.
That's, that's like me buying a house near a railroad that's been there for 100 years, and then complaining that the railroad's there.
Yes, but I, I actually give a lot of weight to their concerns, seeing that they're a member of our community in the Village of Montgomery now. They've been here for more than 100 years, and a business that's flying in from out of state wants to open up this facility with, and frankly, there is no blame that goes on our staff on this petition, because the information that we're getting, and I talked to Jeff about this before the meeting, I know the board doesn't like to get piecemealed information either at the board meeting or in between board meetings with emails from the petitioner that was forwarded along with conference calls and all that. The reality is, we weren't getting, we, until this last week, did not get enough detailed information to make a good decision. And we have that now, and I've made my decision.
And as far as tabling it, if, if I'm a no, Teresa's a no, Denny's a no, not sure where Stan sits, or where Pete sits, but that would become a three to three if they were both yeses, and I don't know where they're at. And then Matt would be the tiebreaker. So the responsible thing to me for the petitioner is to let them know where we stand. Whether they're standing here or they're not standing here, if that's the direction that it's going to go, do they really need to fly in again? Come in, hotels, travel, and all of that to be told, thank you, but no. And so, I mean, I'm doing, I'm just doing the math as I'm sitting here, and if you two are no, I'm a no, and Matt's a no, even if the other two were yeses, it's still a no. And, you know, they want to do a decision so that they could move, move along if they need to. And I feel like it's a responsible thing to do, is, I don't feel like we're cutting them short. I think we're doing them a solid by getting them an answer as soon as possible.
I think it would be irresponsible now, at this point, to table it and say, yeah, spend the money and the time to come in here, when we're having the discussion and we're leaning toward a no.
Okay. And I think we need to have a broader discussion on, on the vision for that area of the TIF, and just, I keep going back to the fact that this specific use at this time is not a fit for the limited space that we have available in our community, especially in M2. And we absolutely need, need to expand our job base in, in the community. So that's obviously ways of my decision, but there's too mu, too many risks here. So unless anybody else has something that they're, you know, want to get off their chest or dying to say, we can continue discussing. Or if there's a motion on Item A, we can proceed that way. The staff has, have anything else to add?
I do not.
Okay.
If there's going to be a motion to deny this, so to speak...
Mm-hmm.
If there's going to be a motion to deny this, so to speak, please remember that that sometimes can get confusing. I would recommend that if that's what you intend to do, that you make it that way. In other words, a positive motion, which is, I move to deny the draft text amendment to Section 11. And then a vote of yes to that motion would be, you're opposed to this. You're, you're denying the petition.
You're in agreement to deny. Right.
Does that make sense?
Can't we just make it in the affirmative, just move to authorize the village board to draft the text, and then we could vote no?
No. See, the reason, the reason is, when you do that, and that motion fails, no action has been taken. So you've, in a sense, left the petitioner hanging, right? Because when a motion fails, that's not a no, that's a nothing. That's why I recommend, for clarity's sake, again, per...
I'll, Trustee Marisak.
I, I would like to make a motion to deny proposing the draft text amendment for ordinance regarding the gas and petroleum manufacturing, Item A.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? So a vote of yes...
Is a no.
Is, essentially...
It's to deny.
Is to deny this.
It's to deny.
It's to not move forward.
A vote of yes is to deny.
I'll, I'll say it very, very plainly. A vote of yes will kill this.
Okay.
Okay. Call the roll.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman?
No.
All right, and that carries 3-1. I do appreciate everybody's help on this. Probably, like Doug said, spent more time on this one issue than I have any other petition over the last six years, so... All right, we'll move on to Item 7, or Item 7 is items for discussion. We have a traffic analysis update.
I think Engineer Wallers will address this.
We've had questions from board members about several different locations as far as traffic control, so we're just going to try and address those.
Thank you. So we had a couple requests for evaluation for stop control at a couple different locations. And just to refresh everybody's memory, we do have a, sort of a screening process that we go through. We have an evaluation form that we complete. I generally try to get out and do some observe the, how things are operating in the area that the questions come up. And then we, based on, and we do request from the police department, the accident data for any of those locations. So the last one that we talked about publicly was the four-way stop at Concord and Gordon. So, you know, we were asked to look at that. We reviewed it, and we did recommend a four-way stop there. So this, this last round, we had requests for four, three locations in Arbor Ridge, and one location at Gordon and Lakewood Creek Drive. And the, I don't know which one you want to start with.
I don't care. I can go to whichever. I got all three pulled up, so you just let me know.
Let's just go with Lakewood, since you're close there.
So this is Concord and Lakewood here?
Yep. So Lakewood Creek obviously comes into Concord. It's a three-way location. Based on granted, limited review, we didn't see anything that raised this to go to a multi-way stop or a three-way stop. I know that one of the specific questions was pedestrian crossing, and obviously, in the winter, that certainly diminished. So what I'd like to do on that one, at this time, I don't see the reason to change the traffic control at that location, but I would like to take a look at it in spring, or when it's warmer, so I can see exactly what's going on relative to pedestrian crossing. And we'd also, I spoke with the police department, we'd, we haven't had any complaints on Concord, but we thought we might put the speed trailer out just to get an idea of speed and traffic counts as well. So for now, I guess our opinion is, would leave it as is with, with a single stop sign on Lakewood Creek Drive. But then reevaluate it in spring to see if there's anything that changes. So that's kind of where we're at there. And just incidentally, there, there were two accidents recorded, but it didn't raise to the level that would warrant a stop, a three-way stop, that you have to have more accidents than that. And I did review the accidents and they were, they weren't due to lack of visibility or anything like that. It was, you know, one was a distracted driver and, you know, so they're, they were pretty explainable, so. If you want to move on to Arbor Ridge?
Sure.
Unless there's questions, sorry, on that. So in Arbor Ridge, we had a request to evaluate three locations. Maple Ridge and Hickory Ridge, which is a three-way intersection. Walnut Ridge and Pine Ridge, and then Pine Ridge and Hickory Ridge. And again, we pulled, we had no accident data at any of the three intersections. They seem, in my opinion, they, the visibility is adequate at all three intersections. And, and I didn't see any need to add an additional, in this case, it would have been a stop control, for example, at Maple Ridge Lane before you get to Hickory Ridge, and it's similar on the other two. So the rule we generally follow is if normal rules of the road apply and are followed and seem to be working, we, we try not to install any additional signs than we have to because we're trying to reduce our maintenance costs on signs. So if we don't think that it's going to make a particular difference at the intersection, and we went through the normal evaluation sheet and it didn't indicate to us that there was any need to add a stop sign at those three locations. So our opinion now is to leave those as is. Again, we didn't have any reported accident data at any, any one of those accidents or any, any one of those intersections.
So there currently is no stops there?
Correct.
So it was requested, looking to see if we should add one.
If you go to a T-intersection, you're, you stop and look both ways before you proceed. That's what you're required to do, you know, if you're taking the driver test. And again, if there was, there are criteria that we look at in the evaluation form, it didn't meet any of those. Like, for, for instance, if you have like bad visibility, for example, that would be a possible reason to, to do something additional. But we didn't see any of that.
Pete, will you repeat the intersections again?
Yeah, it's Maple Ridge and Oak Ridge. Or no, sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Maple Ridge and Hickory Ridge, that's one. And then Walnut Ridge and Pine Ridge.
Up here?
Yep. And then Pine Ridge and Hickory Ridge. Is there. Yep. It's been a while since I put that memo together, but I'm pretty sure those are the three. And again, you know, we've always maintained that if, we're not saying that we're, this is an absolute. Because if something is going on that we just don't see from the times we're out there, understood. And we'll be happy to come out and look at it again. But based on what we've seen to date, it didn't appear to be warranted. So and that goes for any of the intersections that we have looked at. We're always happy to go back and look at them again. If conditions change or if we get better information that somebody says, well, this is when it happens, you need to be out there then. And I'll certainly be out there, but I travel that publicly quite a bit, so I'm pretty familiar with it and I don't see any issues there, so.
And I appreciate the Lakewood Creek because definitely, I live in the area, so spring, summertime is definitely, there's a lot of people going across that, and so it would, it may change the perspective of it. So I appreciate that. You acknowledge that and don't just go with what you see today.
Right. So that's it for the traffic controlled items that came up. I know that there's also a question that was brought up on Mayfield Drive. I did resurrect our 2008 memo that we had done and took a fresh look at it, if you will. Of the things that we had suggested could be considered, quite a few of them had been already accomplished. We had suggested more speed limit signs, which have been installed. I know that they've, the police have been doing quite a bit of periodic and continuous speed enforcement. And then we recommended that they install landscaping at the neck down. Now, that hasn't been done, and that's something that I think certainly could be considered. The purpose of the neck downs was to draw attention as you're going down a street that something's different so that you, your first instinct is to slow down a little bit. And right now, we have the neck down, but there's, it's, it's devoid of any vegetation. So when you look at it, it's not as threatening or you may not respond the same way. If there were trees and bushes on that neck down, I think it would cause a little bit more of a visual impact for drivers and they might slow down a bit.
And I don't mean to put you on this, but where is the neck down at? I drive that all the time and I have no idea what you're, where you're talking about.
It's between the commercial and the residential, so it's, it's.
Okay.
We have a drone, if we can zoom in.
So just past Aldi?
This area?
Yeah, it's right like after Aldi, I think.
If you do trees and shrubs in that area, isn't there more likelihood of someone coming out from behind those trees and shrubs? And potentially causing an accident or a pedestrian vehicle accident? Why would we put trees and shrubs in a neck? I don't understand why we have the neck downs to start.
Well, the purpose of the neck down is to, so it's like coming to a one-lane bridge. You slow down. That's what it's for.
But they don't.
To slow traffic down.
So statistically, they do.
I was just going to say, when you said where it's at, I've never noticed.
Right.
I'm not quite sure what a neck down is, but I think I get it. But I go that way four or five times a week. And that is right past Aldi. You do just inherently naturally slow down. I don't know if it's because I was heading into a residential area or there's a traffic measure in place that's making me psychologically slow down, but definitely slow down in that area.
Yeah, I mean, it's not an extreme narrowing of the pavement. It's twenty-four foot.
Oh, I didn't see it.
But again, it's intended to try to slow things down a little bit is the, the idea.
And the reason you were on Mayfield was because you were using it as a cut through. I don't think Mayfield Drive has a speeding problem. I think Mayfield Drive has a cut through problem. That's the issue. All the people.
I was going to Aldi, which is on Mayfield Drive.
The, but all the people that are coming down whatever, Concord, they're turning onto Mayfield because they don't want to come to the intersection of Concord and Galena and wait to turn left and then come out to, to Orchard and turn left again. They all cut down Mayfield Drive. Mayfield Drive residents have been talking about this for as long as I've been on the board, six, how, how long we've been on the board? Six years? And they were talking about it when we were on plan commission. So obviously, we have traffic counts. The traffic counts are a lot higher than any other, any other, I guess, residential road in the neighborhood in, in the west side. We got to figure out something to do about the, the cut through.
But again, I'm, I mean, I'm going to Aldi, I'm going to Walgreens, I'm going to Rosati's, I'm going to the cigarette place, I'm going to the car wash. So I'm not, those are all along that corridor.
Well, yeah.
If I'm going to Walmart, I go out thirty.
What? I don't think you need to justify why you use a public road to get to businesses in town. What the, the reality is, like you said, Steve, there is not a speeding problem out there. Two percent of the folks that we're, that we monitored on that road, two percent were speeding, right? Going above the, the threshold. So it's a, it's more of a volume issue. And I, I, I'm glad that we're looking at this now. I think the, and I didn't mean to cut you off, Pete. Probably the most important thing for us to do is we're about to have a major change in the traffic patterns in that subdivision, I would think. With the stoplight that's going to be going up on Galena in 2019, I think mid-2019. So I think we, I think we get any more data we can from the PD once that light gets up and running or before then, and we revisit this in August, September.
And that's one of the things that I've spoken to Matt about, but I, I do want to give credit where it's due. And it was a conversation I had with Dan Guyer about, let's get the data before the light goes in and then after the light. So we can have some comparisons and get a real good idea of what's happening on that road.
And I want to amend, just publicly for the record, I know I've talked to trustee Youngerman about it twice now. During the last two snow events, I've driven through here. And the one day, there was one car on the roadway and it was running and he was shoveling his driveway. And on Saturday night, there were three or four, and it was somebody's house where they were having a little get, get together. Otherwise, these folks do a fantastic job of getting their cars off the street and helping our public works department. So they really, they're good neighbors and they're, they're doing the right things for that. Cause I was driving past, I actually called Steve, I said, I can't believe this. I just went the whole length of this and there was one car. I, I was just dumbfounded. So again, there, I want to hear them and listen to what they're saying, but I, I go through there, like I said, quite often. And I'm very conscious of my speed through there. And I think that there's people that will speed. Two percent of the people, I don't know what the percentage is nationally for how often people speed. But there's people that are going to speed and they're always going to speed. Whether it's twenty-five, thirty-five or fifty-five, they're always going to be going over. And I just don't see it there. But again, I think trustee Youngerman hit it on the head, there's a volume problem. They're not happy about the amount of cars driving through there. So then how can we fix that and/or adjust that? And would the residents want that? You know, there was talk at one point of closing this road. If you closed this, so it wouldn't go through? If you lived on Amsterdam and you needed to go to Walgreens?
That's on Facebook. That's not us talking about closing the road. That, that wasn't happening here.
No, but again, if you lived on Amsterdam and now you wanted to go to Walgreens, you're going to drive all the way down Mayfield, back out to Concord, back down Galena and loop around?
Well, hold on.
There'll be a whole nother group of people yelling and complaining about that solution.
Do I remember in my notes or there was a conversation or something that I've heard for the first time in the last couple of weeks? Was there some sort of village lawsuit and with the developer as far as the type of community?
Then, then Lynn.
That was based on the questions here.
Sure. That was, boy, that's a long time ago. Prior to this development occurring, and, and there were two developments here. This is the inland piece of it. That property was already in the village prior to its, you know, the design coming in.
The property itself?
Yeah, it was already annexed. So it, it wasn't our usual circumstance where we're, we're able to negotiate pretty much everything. So the village had rejected their initial design for how they wanted to, you know, do the houses, et cetera, et cetera. And instead of coming back to the village, they basically just sued the village. That's not too terribly unusual with the, this particular developer.
What did the village not like about what inland was going to do?
Oh, I don't remember that.
Can you answer part of that? The, the basic information that you had and all the trustees had regarding the design of the subdivision was that this subdivision was designed without a neighborhood collector that was no load, meaning there are no driveways. So obviously, Mayfield functions as that neighborhood collector. But when you look at other adjacent subdivisions like Lakewood or Concord, you have Concord Drive or Lakewood Drive or Gordon Road that are no load. So that helps facilitate the movement of people, like Mayfield facilitates the movement of people in this area. So the design criteria was not met at the time because as Steve mentioned, the property was annexed and then there was a lawsuit. So they were able to design the way they wanted to versus what would have been good planning for traffic movement throughout the subdivision.
So the village wouldn't have, if the village got its way, we wouldn't have had driveways essentially on something that was like a Mayfield Drive.
Yeah, a, a throughway.
So I don't, I was there, but my memory is getting older every day. And so I don't remember the details that, that Rich just put together, but I, I do remember that we had the lawsuit. Ultimately, it was settled because unfortunately, when property is in the village like that and is zoned properly, our abilities to demand things aren't as strong as they are in what you are quite used to. You know, where we're developing raw land that's being annexed at the same time.
Jeff, can you go to the end of Mayfield Drive where it connects to Gordon, please?
Maybe.
I like Teresa's idea and I, you know, we've, we've talked about the stoplight. And the stoplight was already supposed to be in Kendall County, got involved. There's going to be new roadway improvements to Galena and Concord. I like your idea as far as, okay, let's see what happens with the light. As far as I'm concerned, the light can't come soon enough. It's taken too long as it is. I'm willing to see what the light does. We have a traffic count now. We've got numerous years worth of traffic counts. I'm willing to see what the light does. If the light does not solve the traffic count problem, I'm willing to shut Mayfield Drive down at Concord and Mayfield. If the light does not solve the volume problem, I'm willing to shut Mayfield Drive down at Concord and Mayfield.
You may want to talk to the school district. They may have an issue with the busing problem. Cause all of those, all those folks go to Lakewood Creek.
I mean, to, 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 to take one step, one huge step backwards is let's get the data before we start proposing what we're going to do to the road in this, in this neighborhood. Because if we're going down any sort of physical improvement route, we need to make sure that our, our traffic engineer approves this. That we are doing something safe that we won't get sued by doing. And also to get buy-in from all or as many as we can of the residents here, which includes public meetings and that kind of thing. So for right now, we're not proposing to make any physical improvements there other than what's going on at Galena and Concord. And we'll revisit this probably around August of this year.
But the fact that the village went to court or was willing to go to court to do a non-loading roadway, to try and get inland to do a non-loading roadway through that subdivision, means that the village knew that at some point there were going to be traffic issues on there and that it wasn't designed properly.
I, I think, just to be clear, I think you're taking that a step too far. Although I don't remember the details, I do not think that that was the only thing that was at issue. Because part of what the compromise was involved the type of housing. So I think it was a lot about the type of housing. And the only thing I do remember is a requirement that inland offer aging in place models. In other words, to try to get senior, seniors to be able to live there and stay there, and that has nothing to do with the roadway. So I'm, I'm just, I'm asking you not to make that leap that the village knew something was going to be bad. I don't believe that that's accurate.
Cause we do have roads just like this in other parts of the community, specifically in the other side or where I grew up in Seasons Ridge on Briar Cliff, that it's a much wider road. And there was thought that went into narrowing Mayfield for that exact purpose of slowing people down. So I appreciate the discussion and conversation on this. And it sounds like we should talk about this a little bit later this year. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, I'd like to see the, the data, see what happens.
And I think the, the data needs to be a little bit later than a couple of months after the light goes in because just sheer education. Plus, the other thing to take into account is that that would be during the summer months, not during the school year.
Right.
And that could impact traffic counts dramatically with summertime traffic versus school year traffic. So not that I want to necessarily put it off, but I just want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples. You know, this, these months to these months would be a fair comparison.
Do we have signage on Mayfield Drive that says not a through street?
It is a through street.
Or, or, sorry, not a, or, what's the sign I'm looking for?
No truck traffic or something?
Residential traffic. Like you see them in the city of Chicago. Where you can't turn left to, to make lights and I can't remember what the signs say.
I'm, I'm not sure of what, I mean, a left turn, if that's what you said, certainly those are available. But, I mean, this is a, this is a lawful street and the concept of a cut through, that doesn't sound very good, but it's a legal choice. It's not a private street. It's not a, you know, for the residents only. So that would be a limitation you'd want to take into account.
So what we're trying to do with the Concord and Galena, and it's warranted, to encourage people to make a different choice. To go hit the two lights as opposed to driving through Mayfield Drive. It may not have a huge impact. I mean, it, it's going to improve that intersection, so we'll have to see what the ancillary impact is to Mayfield. So, we'll have to see what the ancillary impact is to Mayfield. Or we could just call this guy up in the top right. Maybe he'll tell us what we did, what we're gonna do.
I saw that. Question on some of the items that were proposed in there, the different, you know, the putting the landscaping in. I know we talked about, or we didn't talk about it, but you had the speed tables in there. Would, if we went to that point, would our non-home rule sales tax pay for that? Does that come out of that fund?
It's infrastructure.
Most likely. If we did road, actual road improvements, it would come from that fund, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that. Okay.
Comments, questions? Thanks, Pete.
Thank you. I thank you to the PD too, for gathering all of the data. They did a lot of, lot of homework on gathering all that information.
All right. Anything new or unfinished?
I do have one item. I just wanted to thank the trustees and the mayor and our clerk. We, I had an email come across my way for the USS Illinois. They are getting set to be deployed to the Western Pacific. It's going to be the first official mission of the USS Illinois. And they have a tradition, the Navy has a tradition of these halfway boxes. So, when they get halfway through their mission, they get these reminders of home and just fun things in the boxes. The, a little bit of a problem is typically, the, the single sailors don't have somebody to do that for them. So, I reached out to my fellow elected folks here up here and said, what do you think? Do you guys want to do something? And they all jumped, jumped on board, no fun intended, and said, yes, let's do it. And we ended up, I wanted to mention, there's 77 single sailors on that ship. So, they had a big, huge list. So, we ended up buying them, you know, some fun stuff, some boring stuff. So, we bought them candy, lots of candy, but also toothpaste. So, I balanced it out. Yo-yos, Mad Libs, just, you know, fun goofy things like that. Just really made me think, my goodness, these are some young folks out there that are heading out on that ship. But I just wanted to thank everybody for being so agreeable and, and just responding so quickly. So, it was taken care of within a couple hours of getting everyone's email. And the package was shipped out to Hawaii, and the folks out there are gonna load it on the ship before it heads out into the Pacific, so.
That's awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing it.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
I want to tell Mark that roads look great. Tell your guys they've done a good job.
They did look great until about 4:30.
Especially with all the water breaks and all that other stuff. You really did a good job.
Yep, likewise. Anything else?
No. I'd like to mirror that, though, Public Works with the snow block, because I know that there's people that make comments about, you know, they're not happy about this, they're not happy about that. And I happened to talk to Mark this morning, and I said, I don't know if these people think that you guys are sitting on the corner drinking coffee. I mean, you're out driving, and you're doing the best you can do.
Absolutely.
Nobody's slacking off. They're doing the best they can do, given the conditions that they're in, and the hours that they're allowed to work. And sometimes, things are gonna go wrong, and, you know, they could miss a street. Pick up the phone and call. Don't jump on Facebook and blast them. Pick up the phone and call somebody and let them know, because it could be an honest mistake, because people are human. And we do have a lot of new guys on the crews this year. So, again, my hat's off to everybody for all the hours that they've been putting in and keeping us all safe and the roads cleared. I actually drove past this morning. I was on the phone, and I looked over, and he was plowing in front of the PD. Mark was, as I drove past him, so.
And think about, the crew first went out, one of the crews went out at midnight last night. And then, some folks worked 10 hours and are back plowing right now.
So, we started a crew at about midnight roughly last night, followed by an additional crew that came in at 5:00 AM. The first original crew at midnight worked till 12:00 PM this afternoon, and then went home. Some of those members are back again tonight after we got this additional snow that came through. So, on top of that, we did have a water main break that came in during the event in the heart of the snow, which we were forced to use a subcontractor to come in and combat that issue. But, yep, it was all hands on deck for the most part. And our guys did a fabulous job, so. Very proud of the job they did.
I did actually see some compliments on Facebook, too. Wasn't all complaining. I can't remember which HOA group it was, but there were compliments there, too, so.
Thank you, and thank you, PD. For the record, the PD does ticket. So, thank you. I think we, we let the residents know every time.
I will say this. Steve is the Facebook junkie of the board.
Yeah.
And he does put it out there that two inches of snow are coming, get your cars off the street. And then he even does a second one that says, we are at two inches. They're gonna start writing tickets. Please get your cars off the street. So, I appreciate the fact that Steve is out there trying to spread that word and share it. You know, I know on my street alone, that there was four cars this morning that were on the street. And they're on there every snow event. And I believe that it was addressed this afternoon.
Yeah, I don't know who the staff was this afternoon, but the comment we always put in the newsletters, do not take your snow and throw it in the road. And somebody this afternoon got my two neighbor kids that took all the snow off their driveway and threw it in the road. And one neighbor farther down threw out, had his truck come in and throw it all, spread it out on the whole road. And both of them were back shoveling it back on their property. So, somebody stopped them, whether it was a squad car, or whether it was somebody from Rich's kupa or somebody like that. But somebody told these guys, you can't, before, they, they just left it there. But now, they got the message, I'm sure, especially these two kids, because they were shoveling them back. So, I appreciate that, because maybe that'll stop them from doing that.
And, public service announcement. As everybody is well aware, Wednesday is going to probably set records for being the coldest day in Chicagoland history. So, make a plan. Don't go out unless you have to. And Village Hall and the PD will be open as warming centers. But this is like, very serious cold. I don't need to say that to you guys. So, with that, our future meeting's there. I think we will probably have the committee, the whole meeting in February on the 19th. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss an employment of an employee.
So moved.
Second?
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
And trustee Lee?
Yes.
Awesome.
Thank you.